Special meeting of the Kingsburg Board of Education. We have held in the Old Town Middle School chip. Addictive schools, who has been mailed to Esberry Park Press. Esberry Park Press filed the new school clerk of Kingsburg and posted on the district clerkage to post it inside the office of the Kingsburg Board of Education. One hundred comma place Kingsburg, New Jersey, county of town, twenty two. World Hall? Mrs. Gray?
Here.
Mrs. Frizell?
Yes.
Ms. Keller Hammerella?
Yes.
Mr. McAskey?
Here.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Huff?
Here.
Ms. Ward?
Here.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Uh, please stand before the court. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation for the drive, freedom, liberty, and justice for all. Can you give your report?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to address all of everybody here at the meeting. It's nice to see that so many people from our community that have come out, also those who are watching online. There have been two committee meetings, one being earlier this evening, which is prior to this meeting tonight, and another on April four. In both meetings, we discussed an unexpected and deeply challenging financial blow. A promise of three point two six million dollars in underfunding approved and allocated for the current H VAC construction project was rescinded without warning. This decision affects a small number of districts in New Jersey. Kingsburg is the only one in the county. The districts planned responsibly, filed every regulation, and met every deadline. The district had been conservative in spending for years following the harsh constipated funding formula that nearly impacted the district years ago. In response, the administration has put forward the calls to reduce costs, protect the core, although makes key to a problem. After sub options being discussed, the current recommendation to put forward tonight includes the following amendments, as we've already approved tentative budget. Utilizing four hundred and thirty one thousand, one hundred and thirty four dollars in surplus homes for next year's budget. Carefully reducing select areas, including supplies, preschool busing, and reduction of summer school hours. Withdrawing one million, nine hundred and forty three thousand, eight hundred and sixty three dollars from capital reserve. For those of you who are unaware of the capital reserve, it's sort of an emergency fund that's accrued, and just recently we had a working break in Russo that would take care of those funds. So utilizing that money is kind of important for the district, for unforeseen circumstances. Next, there will be applying one million of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five SDA capital emergency projects grants to reduce the overall shortfall. And lastly, an additional tax increase from the previous tentative budget for a group of one point four seven percent. These steps will allow the district to maintain essential students, board, staff, and programs, while eliminating the tax impact. The administration is also actively pursuing every possible avenue to recover the federal funds. Communication with state and federal officials has continued, but the goal of holding the decision makers accountable. The district may be small, but is strong, resilient, and glad about its shared purpose. Thank you.
Any other meetings? Sheena?
So prior to opening up for public comments, there were some misconceptions or frequently asked questions that we wanted to touch on. So the first one is why did we require a special meeting and why wasn't this done at our normal meeting? And why wasn't there an early agenda posted? Well, the board did approve a tentative budget on May eighteenth, twenty twenty five. That budget was balanced and complete with minimum impact. And then on March thirty first, a Monday, we received a copy of a letter from the federal government confirming that we were to lose about three point three million dollars. And that was affected the previous Friday. So in order to have a budget approved at our regular April twenty ninth meeting as necessary by statutes, we have to reopen the previous tentative budget and account for the loss of three point three million dollars at April nine. Number two, how is the district accounting for that three point three million? Mr. Cook just explained most of that. So we're including that within our budget because we now know as of this moment, we are not going to see that money from the federal government when we request. So one million dollars from the SDA capital emergency grant, that money was earmarked to remove the current Fort Amethrower trailers that are out there, like basically the preschool, and paid that for a kiss and go lot for preschool use only. Unfortunately, we have to allocate that now to this area. Preschool courtesy busing will be removed, some supplies, summer school, short reductions for the high school, and capital reserves, which have no tax impact, the surplus. And the tax increase is only an additional one point four seven percent, which is three dollars on the average. The next question was staff cuts. There's a lot of talk about staff cuts. There was not a lot of letters being announced today that happened across the district. Unfortunately, we did lose two staff members, two staff members across the district. Those will not impact that size, because that was another question, or any other that will ever happen. Why wasn't the money spent earlier? People are saying, it's only been over a year, why do you say that? That's not what happened at all. I thought I outlined it in the letter, I think someone just verified. We couldn't receive our reimbursement until the program was one hundred percent completed. So the entire project, everything they were working on, was one hundred percent completed. There was supply chain issues. Because of that, the government was allowed for late completion, which meant that you had to apply pretty much drugproofs to get an extended pay when the project is completed. We did everything we needed to, we got approved. They told us that the money could be withdrawn as late as late twenty twenty six, December of twenty twenty six. So we still had plenty of time until we received that notice. What have you done to this notification to advocate for our district and to bounce the budget? And is there a formal appeal? There is a formal appeal. We did every appeal we could. We did that at the county level, the state level, the federal level. There also is a lawsuit that New Jersey has entered into with several other states that are also affected. That's the type of clarification, just New Jersey, it's states everywhere that are affected by this. How did previous years of financial planning, like building our surplus and capital revenues and reserves, help us navigate this crisis better? As of June twenty second of twenty two, we had no capital reserves in place with the district. So that means that if there was an emergency or we had a project that we needed to complete, the burden would go into the taxpayers. So since then, we've been building up the capital reserves in order to lessen the tax impact. So that is how we were prepared to do projects that now will have to go to the side if we do have to make the H VAC complete now. That would include things like, as I said, the preschool, fixing the Caruso playground. They have some holes there that we need to fix. We did want to do some football field upgrades and some track floors and the older parking lot. So now that we know we're not going to be able to fund that program, because we did have to pull any of those things, we will try to do shared services with the towns levels with the parking lot, things like that. So we'll look for other ways to do it. Other districts posted or spoke of a tax incentive program, so some questioned why we're not doing that. So to explain what that was, in order to get the tax incentive program and get approval for it, you have to use every penny of your surplus. So for us, that was roughly two million dollars. That is, that would go to taxes. So the taxpayers would be covering that two million dollars. And the way this incentive works is that if you put a million dollars forward, you get fifty thousand from the federal. So we would have to ask the taxpayers to pick up an additional million dollars in order to get five, fifty thousand. So it's one five cents per month is what they were offering. But to get it to even a tenth of it, you'd have to spend all your surplus, which would have been an additional two million dollars for taxes. Majority of taxes collected go to the schools. This was another thing that we've been asked and told. In Kingsburg, roughly thirty five percent of the taxes that are collected go to the schools. The rest is not. So it's about thirty five percent that goes to the schools. Property values are going up, doesn't that mean that we get more money automatically in the school budget? No, that's not how it works though. How it works is that we create our budget and we say this is what we need, and then we hand that in. We don't really, if the house values go up, how that gets spread out more in the last year have a negative impact is because, I said, it's like the simplest, and I know it sounds silly, but let's say you went to dinner, there was six people, the bills three hundred dollars, and you're each paying fifty dollars. You go to dinner, there's two people, and the bill is three hundred dollars, you're each paying a hundred and fifty dollars. So the tax impact on homeowners is less when everything goes up, but it doesn't affect what we budget. Another question was why didn't we share this loss previously? There was no previous limit. We were told that would happen. So there was no way to inform anybody that there was a possibility of losing money because no one's ever this. Like there's no way anyone could have planned for, known this was coming, or done anything or reacted. You can't be proactive to something that there's no chance of ever happening, and then suddenly overnight it happened. This is, this is just a verification one too. So we get questions like, well, how did you afford the furniture? How did you get a new scoreboard? We just got a grant for pickleball courts. They are completely and totally different funding sources, and we cannot attribute to it something that they won't. So we applied for a grant when we just got the local recreation grant, and they're going to give us ninety one thousand dollars if the board approves these events up at our next meeting. And it's specifically for pickleball courts. We can't then say, well, we don't want pickleball courts anymore, we're going to take that money for the year. You're not allowed to do that. If there's grants for specific programs, and you cannot change it to something else. So that's what that's for. And the furniture was all grant also, because there was complaints about like how to add all the furniture, that's all grant also. And if we look for grants for staffing, for mental health, for everything else, unfortunately, the things that we are able to get grants for are not the things that are topical or personal, but we will take what we can. Obviously, a lot of people say, no, we don't want the furniture, even though we need this more, but we only take what is available to us. This was one two. What would happen if we don't pay for the rest of the project? Because that is what we need to do. So we would leave the two million that we already spent, because what we're waiting on is kind of like, is literally called a switch, and it makes everything work. And that's what the supply chain issue was for, for this switch. And if we don't pay, first of all, the rest of us, and then we're going to have astronomical lawyer fees because we're going to be sued for not paying. And everything that we have already spent is completely useless, and we're back to where we started. What happens if we do receive the money? So if this loss is, or somehow this is reinstated, so it would replenish our capital reserves and also offset future costs that would affect future tax increases. And then this one, like what can, what can anybody do? Everything that we're trying to do, like you can just be heard. That's really all you can do. You can, you can reach out to legislature, senate, the, anybody, there's the county and, I'm forgetting, but anybody that you could call and just try to be heard, because we are a technical town, and we are the only one in Monmouth County that was affected by this. And if we can't be heard, then nothing's going to happen. It was really vital for us if we're not ready for ourselves. So just any way that we can advocate for ourselves, please do. We can put out phone numbers. I've been in contact with, actually, they've, they've been very responsive. The local back, the scanner called back, Senator Moata called back, like they have been responsive, but we just need to keep it going and make sure that we're being heard.
All right, well, now open the meeting. Any public comments or agenda items? Please come up and state your name. Again, anyone who'd like to speak on public agenda items, please come up.
Hi.
And if you, if you please pull it down a little bit, I've got it very, very quickly. There's an on.
Okay.
Should be on.
Okay.
Then they're on.
I just want to change the press. I think you're in the meeting, please sit down. How much capital reserve does the school have?
I heard something about a hundred and ten, okay, but I didn't hear, that's what I'm saying, I didn't hear right.
One point nine.
One point nine, okay. Both my eight and second clear, something for me. I understand from you, if I'm correct, that thirty five percent of the tax budget goes to the school, right? I did ask the previous years at the council meetings, and I was told that the budget for the town is separate from the budget for the school. But then from what you're saying, from the tax that are collected, so that thirty five percent goes with the established budget of school, right?
So at our regular budget presentation, if you look at previous ones, there's a pie chart, and that pie chart would say, like, let's say the average home, this is more than the average, but if it's just a random number, if a home pays ten thousand dollars in taxes a year, thirty five percent of that goes to schools.
I'm only asking you this because I didn't see in the budget, the town budget, I didn't see a lot of delineating this part goes to the school. So maybe that's why.
So it's separate, we can set it all, that's great, it's separate.
Sorry.
The superintendent said, you think of it as a pie. The borough only collects the money, they collect all the taxes, but they don't have anything to say about the county rate, or by the school library tax, or the orphan space, or the school. Each of them have their budgets adopted, and then they notify the county what the rates have to be, and then the county comes back and tells the town, okay, you have to collect this much money and distribute it this way. So there's no line item in the town budget.
I understand what you're saying. The money just collected ten dollars, but I see the budget for the town, we said it because the rest are going to the school. So now we are four million dollars, let's say, allowed. On the downside, right? And this, from what you're saying, is starting to reflect in an increase in our taxes. I see something like a thousand or something three hundred.
Oh, no, no, no. That was the worst case scenario.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. You take that, and then you send it out, it's what we do last week.
Yeah, no, so that was if we were not able to use our capital reserves and use the million dollars that was earmarked for the preschool. So now we were able to offset everything except for a hundred and twenty five thousand.
Oh, that's accurate.
So a hundred and twenty five thousand for the entire town of Kingsburg that it may be increased from the previous.
Good. Then if these two budgets are separate and we have capital reserves, I understand that the town holds the capital reserves after for like exceptionally circumstances. Does the budget in the town get torn together, so that part of that capital reserves that they are next to be used for that?
It's half state. Except for shared services. So we'll do some shared services with the town to assist with.
Maybe shared services is like, I think everybody said something that the preschool budget will be.
Preschool courtesy busing will go on. So this cannot be a drastic for the town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, please come forward, state your name. Seeing that there's no other question.
Oh, wait, I got one.
Please state your name, sir.
Uh, yes, Ted.
Have any addresses, please, for the record?
What?
Address for the record?
No, I'm good. Um, I have a question. Um, so you're saying a hundred and twenty thousand. Okay, that's making one of our taxes. What does that mean, dollar wise, per household?
Three dollars additional.
Okay, so three dollars additional.
For an average home, which I believe was three hundred, three oh.
Is that certain, or is that kind of?
That's what they gave us when they gave us the ridiculous.
Is there any reason that for what?
Not from our budget, but from the town, or whoever's budget we're not adopted. Not from us.
So that can go by?
Not from us.
Okay, so you're not going to raise it. Is there any chance that, anybody else going to raise it?
I can't think of that.
So there's a chance to go?
There's a chance to can, there's a chance it can't, both chances are as.
Well, I think we've had sufficient rates in our past, over the past couple of years, so.
Not from us.
Rates and.
But I'm just trying to say.
So you have to go to like a council meeting to find out. Yeah.
No, I'm not trying, like all I'm saying is all that we can control is our budget and what we do, and we worked really hard. Like this came out of notes, note, so people to say like, you should have been prepared, be prepared in the way that we need our capital reserves. If we didn't have that right now, that's what the state told us to do, is go raise taxes forty four percent, thirteen hundred dollars on everyone, and all of that. They say that we are seven point five million dollars below our fair share. That means that they're saying that the town has contributed seven point five million dollars or less, and they are supposed to use school taxes. Obviously, we don't, we, we would never be willing to raise taxes like that. So we love to weather our difficulties such as capital reserve.
I'll make sure. Um, I just want to make sure, so there is, there is possibility of, there is possibility of.
Well, I don't feel that, honestly, I have their budgets, I believe they're.
Yeah. I want to make sure whether a hundred percent possible, it's not like you're, they're still possible yet. Got you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, please? Please, raise your hand.
Council speaker. Good evening. Tom Brennan, thirty five, Shady Side. I want to give everyone a quick word. It's good to hear that feedback, it's good to hear that capital reserves were built up. Either it would be probably best to put those N A Qs on websites, this way people who don't have, can't attend a meeting, or are not watching now, watching YouTube, you guys can go online and spread, have a source of that information. I just want to speak to the fact that it's been said from a couple of folks that we did see this coming. And I think we did see this coming. And I think that when certain administrations get put in place with the promise of gutting the federal government, and in our case, all politics, global, right? This is the result of that.
Thank you. All right, anybody else, please? Raise your hand, come forward. All right, seeing all the people who'd like to speak, and now close that door again.
School Business Administration reports secondhand report. Superintendent of Schools recommends positive action on the following items. One, fiscal years twenty five, twenty six, tentative budget approved.
I have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you. Discussion? Any discussion?
Thank you. I, for the property that we own on our, either, what are we doing? We're sitting on it, we're.
So is that, this we have ourselves to see?
Impact on it, this is all stuff that we, we sell that property, and we can sit on it for a while. If we can settle and find out what we need to do, and then we don't have to do any.
Well, it's not that simple and quick. At first, we were not willing to sell it. And then because it was, so we paid one dollar for it. I don't know if anyone knows the whole story of the law that's over here. So we paid one dollar for it with the idea of that was supposed to be the site of the school. Unfortunately, then, there was some testing that was done, and it cannot be the site of the school. So then we were told that we can only sell it for educational purposes and not for more than the amount that the purchase was. But honestly, we would give it away because we are paying taxes. So we're, we're paying taxes. But just, was it this week or last week? It's last week.
So last week, we actually had conversations with Middletown, and we are going to have a meeting on the books with them soon so that we can start figuring out if we can utilize it for an educational purpose, or use it for an open space, or a green space with Middletown. So more information will come as we're calling out resources and contracts and going through what qualifications will be, but we have a couple of different options coming up.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Mrs. Gray? Mrs. Frizell? Ms. Keller Hammerella?
Yes.
Mr. McAskey?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Huff?
Yes.
Ms. Ward? Ms. Ryan? All right, well, now open the meeting for any public comments. Please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing no people on the floor, close that door. Come, please, hello, get in.
Hi, I'm Christine, I'm, I came late, so the boss and everything, but it's current, so I missed a comment portion. But I guess just a general question, so it sounds like there is, I missed the number of the amount that we still have to pay for the project.
We, oh, you're in three point three million dollars.
Okay, but then you eventually think we, with all the work around, it's going to be about a hundred and twenty five thousand?
Left for taxes.
For taxes, okay. Has there been any other discussion on how we could possibly come up with that hundred and twenty five thousand dollars besides just working with the money and stuff, like getting funded, using it more? Any ideas of how we can call upon our community and the resources that we have here, and really think through how can we raise some money? Because I did hear a portion about how other initiatives are going to be cut as well, and that doesn't sound for you either. I appreciate, as a taxpayer, not having more on us, but it doesn't sound like a best case scenario either way. So I was just wondering if there's been any discussion or any plan for discussion on how we can really come together as a community, maybe through some good fundraising, and really see how we can keep the school thriving, or at least trying to thrive.
So Miss, we have to have the law to do by certain deadlines so that we wouldn't have the opportunity to even try to do that because we're, this is a breakfast meeting because we have to have a certain deadline.
What's the future of that?
So we're definitely open to all suggestions, especially that being one of them. We were supposed to have a tentative budget. We did have a tentative budget approved to the state by the nineteenth. However, they have to have the budget approved back to us so that we can improve the final adoption, so because of timing issue. But if we were even to then raise those funds, we could take what we had to increase this year and offset future.
Okay, so a decision has to be made whether we're choosing to increase or not.
Correct. Or the, or the state will not approve our budget.
Well, I will say now that if there's any fundraising or community, you know, brainstorming sessions or anything, we're, we're asking people to come together. I would definitely love to be a part of that, and I think there's. Absolutely.
Anything? Thank you. Anybody else? Shane, no one? Before you adjourn, do you have any record?
Unfortunately, it's like to do this, it's not easy, and I just think everybody has to come out and finish off some work.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to reiterate a little bit what's transpired. This did come as surprise, I mean, in a very short window, and thankfully, the administration here has been working diligently, not just within that short window of time, but the last couple years, utilizing things like the Kathleen and the C S A, grant based services, shared services, any type of minimization to taxpayers is the most important. And, and the young lady that just showed up then and talked about the fundraising, that's another great aspect to maybe include, because we want the community to come out. You know, it's nice to see that everybody came out here today. These are difficult decisions, but together we are one. We are all living in the same town of Kingsburg, we all have to take on this burden, and we all have to stand together. And thankfully, because of the grants, you know, and the shared services, that's one point nine million in capital reserve, that's, that's a lot of power by the administration. So it's nice to see that that's come closely. Thank you.
So for people that aren't familiar with Kingsburg, we're a town in Africa, so what went on? Kingsburg High School was built in eighteen sixty eight. So when we're twelve days out, fifty seven years later, you know we have to have repairs. We've been trying to get money, and we got money, right? They gave us money to repair the areas, anyway, we worked on the S D A system, and our education system is going out, and that problems with our plumbing, and windows, we needed everything in that school. So to have given that money, we were relieved, right? It's about time. So then they had to pull it out from under us, so everybody wanted to help. But then when you think back, the Caruso school, it used to be the Francis Davis School, right? It took us our ever, take, ever, and ever, twenty years, and a lot of people have been on this board for twenty years. We went to training, we fought the fight, we had a letter writing campaign, we did videos. They got orange and blue letters that our kids wrote too. Why we needed a school, the environment, okay? We called every conference person, we plugged in the phones, we did everything, we fought the fight. And that's who we are, and that's what we're going to continue to do, because that is more money, okay? Our first priority is giving our kids education. We give free breakfast and lunch, food is pure. We give them technology. We try to give things to enhance and make people better. And then we give them opportunities. We have so many new programs that we've given to these children. We have clubs. So we get a lot of bad press, but there's a lot of great things going on. And people best still, on the negativity, or spread their rumors. So we heard real late, lots of many people in that. If you have a question, please come to these meetings. Call the superintendent, follow the chain of command, all you building for school, but come to your, the meetings. the meetings. We want to work as community. We're here for the right reasons. The kids grow, our community grow, okay? We're in the greatest year, I care. Many people look for a reserve, we care, right? My daughter's old and gone and so am I, okay? But I do it for the love of the community and love of the kids. So they're your kids, your great kids, whatever. And that's why everyone is sitting up here. So instead of being sometimes criticizing and saying, don't you, I want to share what we do. Thank you.
Yes, first I just want to thank everybody for coming. It's been a few bad years, um, I think it's worth coming to the local school where we exist. As you can see, come ask questions, those that ask questions that you clarify for the public. Um, first I just want to say it was a regret that I voted yes, I do not as a parent, a homeowner, a taxpayer, um, I do not see taxes increased and taxes lost. I don't think anybody on the board wants to see this, but this was the last thing I can get some praise for one, governing, two, governing body when they feel already settled with another. I think if we can, can, can we please send out everybody, maybe, uh, do something, call them less, school posts on Congress, laws, contact information, set up a scam. If we can get a list of maybe everybody continuously reach out to them. Of course, this is from the federal level, so of course Congress will be the best option to go to. Look, we're actually trying to get them back and use it for more projects and bring back better services for our children. I think that would be the best bet and just want to thank everybody for coming.
Thank you. Ms. Farah?
I do want to point out, we're all at the old meeting, we're in the meeting April twenty-ninth, we're doing a budget review. Hope to see everyone there.
Yeah, just want to thank everybody for coming. Um, you know, as board members, it's frustrating for us because we have sort of ethics that says that none of us are allowed to act on our own. So we can't really go out there and talk to you about things where supposedly the councilman or, or say congressman or something like that, they can go out and hold these coffee talks and meetings and stuff, we're not allowed to do that. We can only act as a board and we're together as a whole in these meetings. So you have to be able to come here and ask those questions and see if you do have questions. Unfortunately, since we're board members, you can go to the central office and ask those questions. Those people are in the second meeting. And if you don't get resolution, that's when you can come to the board and you can ask and bring that information to us. But unfortunately, we're, we're bound by those ethics, we're not allowed to act independently, we're not allowed to put public information out there, not that, because we try to advocate during this time that we're not acting as a board. Um, there is some frustration with that. Um, as Ms. Farah said, you know, we have on April twenty-ninth, we, we have our full presentation. Um, during that time, you'll see that there's lots of information that's out there. I think I saw somebody said they could have us made a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars a year at the present. Google, we are volunteers. Every one of us made zero dollars this year. And we will make zero dollars. We come here in our own time, scheduled, like sometime, we put our athletes, we do our work, um, and there's some things about teachers starting at forty thousand dollars. You don't have to go over a car to see our minutes that are online, none of our teachers make forty thousand dollars a year. We don't start like this. So this information is available, it's probably, you know, if you probably ask us, here we can point you to those directions again, these good leadership teams, because they're on their own. But during that presentation, you're going to hear talks about administrative costs, how we have all the small school offices and some of the low administration also on the front, like the head company, school district. Uh, you're going to see about where our teacher costs are, what certain things are, how to go on and who's doing. There's no secret, there's, you know, sorry, I get a little offended when I hear about how, you know, I'm corrupt. I'm volunteering and I'm not, I promise, if anybody wants to volunteer in my audience, please. And I, 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 we are here volunteering, we're not asking, right? And I don't want to raise taxes, Mr. Kitchen said. I don't want to, that's why I get your kids in the school district and I'm asking, right? I'm not here just to raise everybody's taxes, it doesn't just come from you, or you, or renters or whatever. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming to do what we
All right, thank you again all for coming. Um, I'm at a loss for words again, so I have a phone call from the council, I have a phone call that was in public, I sit there in my drawer because tonight's report, basically, we put forth a project that's going to eliminate jobs and that's not really what I signed up for, but as a water education department, stop it, me. A couple of things, all the Facebook public out there, it's springtime. You know, how do mop washing sheets get out there and get some fresh air? You want to attack someone, attack me. Don't attack my board members, don't attack my, um, superintendent, everyone at the A, attack me, make fun of me, make fun of my policy, I don't care. In the middle of the world, I can say this, I hurt my feelings, that twenty years in prison, they know what it did. So moving forward.
It was not anything we were
Moving forward, I lost my three point nine million dollars. So what I was going to do tomorrow, I was going to fly to D C and walk right up to the education department. What's that going to get me? I'm going to get told by someone lacking, I have all my receipts. What did the borough committee put through wrong? We did nothing wrong. We advocate for our kids every day and teach them not to do wrong. So you're telling us that we didn't have to be right and we're still punishing us. What's going to happen there? I'll probably end up in the hell side of the prison and wrap my check. Stay in Baltimore tomorrow to track my work history. What's going to happen there? Some trooper's going to say, what do you want, fat kid, get out. And I'll end up back in the student state prison, wrap my three point nine million dollars. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to look right at the pattern and say, that would work. Bill, I lost my three point nine million dollars. Water education did nothing wrong. You live twenty-three minutes, the police ask, you can come here tomorrow, if you leave your desk at three thirty, you can be here at four thirty. Leave all of us set, we have some of the best teachers in the country, we have one history teacher right behind that camera. Come meet us, bring my check and tell me what I did wrong. And then when you take that paperwork to D C, we're going to have a conversation. There's no T, there's no R in my word of education, it's just B, it stands for education. And again, I don't understand why Kingsburg, the only district in Montgomery County, everything right is this. I have to ask you even more, that's not what I can do. That you said, make a move, pose a
Judy Seven? Tomorrow, England?
Aye.
Thank you again, April twenty-ninth, I hope you'll go, please, thank you.